How are you?
Looked at breath from the day. Hopefully, hopefully, I'll call everybody for the name.
Unfortunately, no, but that's, that's okay. It goes with the territory. Tonight's a busy night.
Somebody has a microphone.
Can we mute everyone?
Um, just because we have.
Yeah, I can mute them. I won't be able to unmute them now. So they'll have to use star six to unmute during public. Mr. McGinley, Steve here.
Very good. Thank you. Jared, did you get, did you talk to, uh, Mr. Sne?
Yeah, he had the wrong call in, so he's gonna be calling back in.
All right. Thank you. Well. Uh, Mr. Sne and. I think Mr. Griffith, if I don't have. An icon for. Well, we're gonna get started with the meeting 6:02.
Mr. Chairman, Bobby Sne.
Very good. Thank you. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna begin with the Pledge of the Flag, followed by a moment of silence, please. If anyone could stand where they're located. Applause allegiance to the flag. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin. Ms. Hough.
Here.
Hough.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Present.
Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Dedman.
Here.
Mr. Sne.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
Mr. Griffith.
I see his icon.
Mr. Griffith.
Here. I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGinley.
Present.
All present.
Versus the recognition ceremony proclamations. We have one proclamation this evening. Jared Juggerman, who was able to attain the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts, which is quite an honor. We congratulate Jared on his work and. Attaining the Eagle Scout recognition is a very high honor in the Boy Scouts, and that's something you should be proud of. And that proclamation is posted online. Moving down to additions and deletions from voting session agenda.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe Mr. King, the Scout Master, is on the line.
Oh. Mr. King, are you on the line?
Yes, we are. Eric is on the screen.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, Jared is right here. He's the scout.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you for this honor of being here with you guys.
Well, thank you for your hard work, Jared. You should be proud of your accomplishment. As a former Boy Scout, I know what the Eagle Scout rank means, and that's a quite an accomplishment on your part. You should be very proud. And I'm sure your family's very proud of your efforts also. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Jared.
Very good. Okay, now we're down to additions and deletions.
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra. I just sent, I just sent a resolution out to all of council regarding hiring outside council to get an opinion from the courts. Um, on the vote made by the election board for the district attorney election. I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Okay. Anybody with any opposition to that?
Mr. McGinley, I didn't receive that information yesterday.
Uh, I think, um, Ms. Radel, am I correct in saying that you just sent that out maybe 5:30, quarter to six, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah. So it should be on your email, uh, Mr. Sne. And if, uh, it's been posted also on the county web page for county council by Ms. Lawrence.
I, it's posted on the website, and I also re-sent it out to all of council just in case.
Okay. All right. Uh, so we will add that as number eight on our agenda.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like, I'd like to bring the item number six from the work session and put it on the voting session, which is number nine. That's the, that's the information concerning the LCCC.
Well, okay. I know I would be in opposition to that. I believe we need to have a discussion on that. Uh, I'll listen to other members.
Well, I think we've talked about this at past meetings, but I'll just, I'll just, I'll just talk with the other members.
Oh, you've sent emails in that regard, but I don't believe we've ever talked about it. On agenda item. Anyone?
Mr. McGinley.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chris, I would be in opposition to that, too. I'd like to discuss it more.
Okay.
I'd keep it on a work session.
Sheila would as well, because I think we haven't discussed it.
That, that's fine, Mr. McGinley. I'll just pull it off and leave it where it is. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion then to approve the agenda with the addition that we added regarding the district attorney's. Office.
So moved, Linda.
Okay, Ms. Hough. Do we have a second for Ms. Hough?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard. Motion carries. Moving down, motion to suspend the bylaws regarding requirement, majority of participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Hough, do you make that?
Yes.
Do we have a second for Ms. Hough?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard. Motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding conduct to public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Perry.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
That was Mr. Perry.
Second. I'm sorry. Who, who was second, please?
Leanne. I think the first was, I think the first was Chris.
First was Chris. Thank you. Mr. Perry and Ms. McDermott. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, any extensions? Motion carries. We now are open for public comment on voting session agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding agenda item number one for, uh, the contract for, uh, parking. Or, excuse me, excuse me, I might mistake number two, uh, for the lease addendum for Luzerne County and LCC. Uh, for Broad Street Exchange Building. I'd like to make the council aware that, uh, there have been a few students that attend LCC that have talked to me and asked me about the parking. Uh, you know, because there's not sufficient parking spaces, uh, for the students at the broad, LCC that, or attend, who attend LCC at the Broad Street Exchange Building. And they have to use the city garage across the street on the Wyoming Street premises. Um, so I just was wondering if the manager spoke to LCC with, with regards to additional parking spaces. Uh, when it comes to this lease. Uh, that would be my first, my, my question on that, uh, agenda item.
That's, the lease is separate from any parking situation, so.
Uh, well, I just wanted to, you know, make the manager aware of that situation.
You said we had another item?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, with regards to agenda item number six, uh, electronic and telecommunications for all meetings for authorities, boards, and commissions. Now, I can understand, you know, I agree with the premise, uh, by Mr. Griffith with regards to the county council, but I don't believe it's enforceable on the authorities. Considering that the authorities are separate from the, uh, from the county with respect to, the authorities are considered agents of the state, so. We would follow the same guidelines when it comes to the state pertaining to conduct of meetings. So, uh, I think that would be a moot point on the authorities, uh, boards and commissions. And number seven, with respect to, uh, the ACE code, I do believe I agree with this, um, you know, ordinance because of the fact that. I believe any person that's accused has a right to face their accuser, uh, that filed a complaint, so. I do believe that number seven, uh, should be, um, adopted. Uh, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Oh, I have, by the way, as far as the district attorney, because that was just added on, excuse me. Uh, I can't understand why the election board would overrule the, uh, election solicitor. In favor of someone who is not even, uh, a part of the office of law, because that person happened to be appointed as a judge. I mean, that person, if that person wishes to be an attorney representing this county with respect to the office of law. Then I believe that person should be, uh, interviewed and go through the personnel process, just like all the other solicitors and the county employees themselves. I don't believe that this person should usurp the authority of the council. The council should have the right to ask the solicitor, or give the authority for the solicitor. To go outside the scope and hire an outside counsel. So I do, uh, I do want to emphasize that the council's authority should be, uh, allowed to hire or approve or disapprove. Of hiring outside counsel, uh, if the solicitor needs to do it. I think the solicitor needs to come in front of council to do that. Uh, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public, please.
Uh, hello, I'm checking to see that you can hear me.
Sure, we can hear you. Who, who's speaking, please?
Thank you. My name is George Butwin. Um, I'm, I live in Shaver Town, and I'm calling, I don't know what agenda item it is. But this is in regards to the Second Amendment sanctuary.
Mr. Butwood, that is on the work session. Uh, it's not part of the voting session agenda. And so you can either wait till the end of the, the voting session and comment at that point, or wait till the end of the work session and comment at that point. That we're only looking at the voting session agenda items currently.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll mute myself and wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Very none. We're moving down, motion to approve the minutes from the April 27th meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Simon, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
Urban? Any extensions? None heard. Motion carries.
Uh, no.
Moving over to agenda items on the county manager.
I'm opposed to the minutes as well.
Okay, Mr. Griffith also in opposition to the minutes. Moving over to agenda items on the county manager. Number one, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract. Repin have realty for Penn Place Employee Parking. Do we have a motion?
So moved. So moved, Sheila.
Well, Mr. Griffith was first. Ms. Griffith. Ms. Simon, second. On the question?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. McGinley. I'm looking at one of the sheets on there where there's an expired insurance policy.
Okay.
Um. I guess it's page 23, I think, of the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Somewhere in there, there's a. Work, workers' compensation and employees, or employers' liability policy information page. Uh, the policy period expired as of 1/1/2021. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's like page, page 22 of 70.
Page 22?
Yeah. It's under Eastern Insurance, or Eastern Alliance Insurance Company. It's a policy ending in 7735-10.
I don't, I don't see it on page 22. I'm sorry.
I have it under the PDF itself, you know, so.
Okay.
It would be 19 of 70 if you look at the agenda page.
19, okay. Let me look at that. Thank you.
I mean, that's a Adobe Acrobat, so it's. Counting the first.
Yes. I see that now. Page, you're right. Page 19 of the agenda packet.
Yeah, item number two, policy period. My question is, too, is why are these things coming so late to council when this was actually supposedly signed back in December, and it's already May? You know, I mean, this, I think it's, uh, something that, you know, are we just doing this? At this point, just, just to do it because everything's been signed off on. We're taking a vote on it, but none of this paperwork seems to be in proper order.
Well, uh, Mr. O'Neill. Who, uh, who handled this lease agreement?
Um, I, I was, I was involved in some discussions with, uh, Mr. Janetti on this lease, but I did not handle this exclusively. As far as the contract information, I believe that's typically, uh, conducted by, uh, members of our purchasing department. And with some people that had left the department and the short staffing, I believe some of these items may have been delayed.
Okay.
Can we at least get the paperwork in order and get the proper dates on, on insurance items?
I will get it, I will get an updated certificate of insurance from Mr. Janetti on that matter, and if you would like to approve that contingent upon receipt of that updated certificate. Um, I will have that over before the end of the week.
Okay.
I would make that motion to, you know, amend that.
Mend or?
Well, let's vote on it, you know, contingent upon that certificate. I mean, I, I don't like, you know, things coming to us four months later, you know, after they've been signed off on to December prior, you know, in a prior year. And then you look at this stuff half the time, and, you know, a lot of times these dates are expired or, or passed, so. I mean, I'd hope management in the future would bring these items to us in a more timely fashion.
Well, Mr. Griffith, do you want to make that motion to approve this contingent upon an updated insurance, uh, certificate?
Thank you, Mr. Urban. I'll make the motion for now.
Well, Mr. Griffith made the motion originally. That's why I went to him.
Oh, I, yes, I'll, I'll make that amendment. That's fine.
And Ms. Simon, will you second that part of it?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the motion with the addition that an updated insurance certificate will be supplied. Correct? Okay, roll call, please.
Is there a hint in the motion regarding the insurance, or is it just motion?
It's part of the motion.
All right, Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Dedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease addendum. In Luzerne County, Luzerne County community college, per premises located, the current lease, as you say, in the Broad Street Exchange Building. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Second.
Second, Sne.
Second, Mr. Sne. Any question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas, you muted, or?
Uh, you know what? I lost his icon here on the screen. I don't know. It got cut off. He was on there. Continually, it'll come back.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Dedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Lawrence, thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number three, motion to introduce an ordinance, amend the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the ERA. We have a motion to reduce this ordinance.
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Hough, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Dedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Abstained for reasons discussed prior.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
F- ten yes, one abstention.
Okay. Moving down to number four, motion to introduce an ordinance, amend the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and this is the general fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Hough, do we have a second?
Sheila.
Ms. Simon, on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Dedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number five, motion to introduce an ordinance, amend the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is drug and alcohol. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Okay, Ms. Hough and Ms. Simon, second?
Yes.
On the question?
Just a quick question here. I'm looking at section, section two. Did we have a public hearing on this one?
We don't, we will have a public hearing. We're just introducing the ordinance tonight. Our next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, thank you. That's it.
Sure. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Dedman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number six, motion to adopt a resolution requiring use of electronic and telecommunications for all means Luzerne County Council. And authority boards and commissions of Luzerne County. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
On the question?
Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to note, do the, do the authority boards and commissions have the ability to do that with ease?
Well, they've been, they've been doing it since the pandemic.
So there are no additional complications with them doing it?
Well, I don't, I don't know what their complications would be, but they've been, they've been doing their meetings right along with that platform in place, so.
I, I don't agree with that totally. I think there's some that have been doing. In person, maybe because of small numbers. I don't believe some of the, the boards and commissions have the capabilities, and I believe that the authorities are outside the realm. And we can dictate that part of it to them. So I, I will make a amendment to remove authority boards and commissions. That'll be my amendment. Do I have a second?
Second, Sne.
Mr. Sne?
On the amendment?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Um, one of the, one of the reasons why I included the boards was the public comment on the Elections Board particularly. Uh, I've, I try to attend as many board meetings and authority meetings as I can possibly attend. It makes it really easy for me as a council member to actually attend these, these meetings, but. Most importantly is the, the public comment that was rendered at Board of Elections meetings was that continually, people from Salem Township have chimed in and said. That they want to continue with this platform because it makes it easier for them to attend the meetings. And so that's why I thought this resolution would be appropriate, is because there's a lot of people, and Luzerne County is huge. And anybody on this council who has campaigned, which all of us have, know how vast this county is, and in order for people from Salem Township, or Union Township, or. Freeland Borough, or Foster Township, to come to a county council meeting, or a Board of Elections meeting, or any other meeting. Is very, very difficult for the public to attend any kind of public meeting. Now, if we want to shut the public out, this is a good way to do that, is to just vote no on this resolution. Because I think the issue, the issue is that we want to make public comment accessible, and we want to make meetings accessible. That's, that's what we should be thinking about doing. Now, if they don't have the wherewithal to make that happen, we certainly have an awful lot of ways. Through the pandemic funding that we can provide funding to make these boards and authorities compliant. But for us to just say, well, I don't think it's appropriate to include the boards, authorities, and commissions, I get the authorities. I, I understand that. Part of the argument, that authorities certainly are not mandated by county council role. But I think the boards and commissions certainly should be, uh, at least, well, we, listen, we, we tell the boards and authorities and commissions to put up their minutes, and they don't do that either. So I, I don't know really how much authority we would even have here, but my argument is that the boards are important. These meetings are important to the public to be able to attend. So that's why the resolution was done.
Um.
Go ahead, Simon.
I, I just wanted to say, I agree with Walter in terms of the rationale behind it. I mean, the bar association discussed that the other day with the need. To continue some of the, I mean, the Zoom in many cases, because it allows so many more people to participate easily. Um, I just. I was just concerned if it presents some kind of hardship. Now, if you're saying that the monies can be provided, the financial backing can be. Now, if you're saying that the monies can be provided, the financial backing can be provided to allow that, or, I don't know, if we talk to someone like in the IT department, if that will be, you know, a reasonable thing for them to do, that's not a problem. I mean, I think it's important that the public does, is able and easily, easily able to attend these meetings.
I think, you know, there are good arguments on both sides, but I, you know, this says required, I see no reason for like the election board, because of the fact they operate pretty much out of the county office, et cetera, they have the access, and there's no reason for not to continue, but to say that it's required, I think is a problem. No, we're not saying anyone, don't do it. And if, you know, they certainly are more than welcome to continue with whatever processes they've had in place, and, you know, I don't see that cha-changing particularly for the election board, but I think to say required is, is the issue.
Well, we, we told them they're required to post their minutes, we told them they're required to post.
Well, I think that's a little different.
Their bylaws. Well, it's not different, we, we, I mean, you don't have to. Yeah, well, they don't have to, but I, 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 listen, I understand, but if we don't tell them they're required, they're gonna, they're, they're just not, they, maybe they won't do it, and then what are we gonna say then if some constituent says, well, jeez, I would have loved to be able to attend these meetings, but they don't post their meetings, now we can't go to them and say, hey, you gotta post these things online? You know, I just, I just think that requiring boards and commissions that were responsible for operation and oversight, I don't think is, is a, is a, something that we shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. McGinley, I have a comment on this too, I mean, like, with, with the terrorist funding and whatnot, I mean, a lot of that funding was supposed to be utilized to ramp up technology in today's day and age, you know, maybe provide them a Zoom account or, or get them on Teams or something, you know, I mean, many of these board meetings are very small to begin with, I mean, even, I mean, just to, just to put a Teams meeting together and allow them a channel or something to provide their meetings in public, I think would be the most sensible action to, to take. After all, we do appoint all of these authority board and commission members, and I think the right thing to do would, to make it so that their meetings are more open, that they are above sunshine, and that we don't have any questions like this, I mean, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer to have, have this technology in place, and to either give them a Zoom account, or get them a license, have IT check into it, and get them online, and get them doing what they need to do out, out in the open, because sunshine is the best disinfectant, you know, so quite honestly, like I said, this is a no-brain issue, it just needs to be done, and I think we have the funding there to do it.
I think we're unsure about that part of it. I do think if we, if we know that all the things are available to them, then we can certainly come back and revisit it, but at this point, I don't think that's available to every one of them.
I mean, it's not that hard.
I also think that they have to abide by the sunshine laws, whatever they may, may be, so that's not a problem, because that's a requirement, and that's a requirement through the state, so I think that's where we're at.
Mr. Chair, this is, you know.
Go ahead.
I, I, I agree with, with what you've said regarding the not requiring a blanket, having a blanket requirement that all the ABCs follow this, my concern with that, especially when you're talking about a board like the election board, there's enough that our ABCs are required to follow because of the, not just federal and state law, but we have a unique charter that has different requirements for these ABCs. These are, are people who may not be as up to date with all of the regulations they're required to know, and then if we're gonna add another hurdle for them, what happens if the election board makes a decision, we pass this, the election board makes a decision, and for some reason there's an issue with the meeting was not available via Teams, will that be used as a sword then to somehow invalidate a decision of the election board? And we're in that, we'll end up in the same situation that we get in many times because of issues with the Home Rule Charter not being completely consistent or in conflict with, with state law. I mean, just as an example, recently, Mr. Griffith had brought up what he purported was a, an opinion from the Office of Open Records regarding the Children and Youth Advisory Board, those people were petrified, because Mr. Griffith, I believe, had, had notified them that they were in violation of state law, and then he went to the Office of Open Records.
I never, excuse me, Mr. DeLuca. I never did that. That is, that is not true. That is not true, Mr. DeLuca, I will not sit here and allow you to expound on something that is not true.
Those people had contacted me.
I did not say anything of the sort.
The people had contacted me, they were very concerned because they had been advised that they were not in compliance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act.
Your people are incorrect.
Mr. Griffith actually contacted the Office of Open Records, failed to provide them with the complete information, and received what he claimed was an advisory opinion from the Office of Open Records. There is no procedure for obtaining an advisory opinion from the Office of Open Records, and I contacted them about that, and received from the executive director of the Office of Open Records, a letter that confirmed that any use of whatever was said to Mr. Griffith as a, an advisory opinion, it is not one, it's withdrawn to the extent that it was, it was used in that way, and that even if they were going to give any advisory opinion, they would need more information. So by council requiring all of the ABCs to comply with something that goes even further than Pennsylvania Sunshine Act goes, is, is perilous for the, the very people that you appoint to serve in those ABC positions. I would, I would request, if, if council is inclined to do this, which obviously is within council's right to do that, that some sort of inquiry be made to each one of the ABCs, find out what their tech, technology capabilities are, and find out if there's any other logistical issues with actually being able to comply with this.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, that, 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 that whole diatrate that Mr. DeLuca just said was total false nonsense. I never sent no such email to the advisory board, that letter that I received from the advisory board was sent to the Office of Law and to members of council only, if somebody else has it, that's fine, that's up to them to get, but Mr. DeLuca has absolutely no right to sit here and, and disparage me for sending something to the Children and Youth Board, it has nothing to do with him. He's the solicitor for this county council when he's asked. Yeah, I don't need his, I don't need his opinion on this whole idea, this was not sent to the Children and Youth Advisory Board, and it was not sent to anybody saying that that was a, an opinion of the advisory board, I requested from the advisory board if in fact that advisory boards have to follow the sunshine law. They sent me back a letter that said, yes, they do, and I forwarded it off to county Office of Law and to the county council, that was the extent of my communication. Now, if Mr. DeLuca has other information, that's perfectly fine, but didn't, didn't come from me, so for him to sit there.
You read it at an open meeting.
Where?
That's the only reason, that's the only reason I, I looked into it further.
Where?
You read it at a public meeting.
Yes, I did, I read it into the, into, at, to council members.
Okay, I, I, I.
But I didn't give it to the advisory board.
No, you had already advised the advisory board.
I did not advise the advisory board, and I never spoke, I never spoke to the advisory board, Mr. DeLuca.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, is this germane, is this germane to the question here?
No, it's, it's not germane, but Mr. DeLuca wants to jump in on a council meeting and be a member of council here.
Well, Mr. Griffith, please. We, we're on the amendment, which will remove the authority boards and commissions. I made the motion, Mr. Schnee made the second.
Well, on, on that, on that motion, Mr. McGinley, I, I think the wording required, possibly, maybe we could say strongly urged, we could use other language.
Let's vote on this amendment first.
Okay, very good.
And we can proceed.
Chairman McGinley, if I, if I may, I did get an email from Maro tomorrow about this issue, and I'll just read it to council that to require this would require perpetual Zoom license unless until Teams adds some features to make managing the meeting easier, that's a $32,000 annual expense. Additionally, IT can't devote half a full-time employee to these meetings forever without increasing the IT staff at least by half full-time employees. The, the courts want an AV specialist as well, so that, you know, there's issues with staffing. I just wanted to counsel to be aware of that, that I did receive this email from Maro.
Okay. All right, the amendment is to remove authority boards and commissions from the resolution that has been submitted. I made the amendment, Mr. Schnee made the second. I'm gonna vote on that, roll call please.
Miss Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ninety-two.
Okay, the amendment passes, so authority boards and commissions are removed from the resolution.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to say that I particularly like when the solicitors, whether they're asked or not, to, to comment on a particular resolution, like Ramilda just did in terms of demuro, and like Vito just did in terms of explaining the possibility of not having that requirement in. So I don't, I, I particularly like it, I like to hear their comments as well, I don't think they're acting as another member of council, they're acting in an advice and consent basically position.
We go back to the motion.
Yeah, and I would like, if I could, Mr. Chair, if it's germane to the issue, you know, making connections to other unrelated items even to illustrate a point is not appropriate. So what Ramilda did was totally within her realm of professionalism, and I appreciate that, that what looked like to me was an attack on, on Mr. Griffith, inappropriate, shouldn't happen.
Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Griffith, seconded by Mr. Urban, to adopt the resolution requiring the use of electronic telecommunications for all meetings of Luzerne County Council.
Mr. McGinley, I just wanted to make. Right before the vote.
There's two people trying to.
I'm sorry.
Catch in here, I, I, one at a time, please.
I just wanted to jump in real quick and, and just say, like Luzerne County, in my opinion, is in the stone ages when it comes to technology, I mean, me obviously being a resident and IT person where I work, I use Teams every day, and, and they're, it's very feature-rich, it's not hard to use, it's very easy to use, I mean, for God's sake, you can even set up a, a simple conference call number, if you want to stay in the stone age, go out and get a bridge number from a company, from a telephone company, and give them a permanent bridge, I mean, there's ways of technology to, to have meetings in the open and in the public, it doesn't cost that much, you don't need another IT person to do it, it's not that difficult. You set up a recurring meeting on a monthly basis, and you just sit it on a calendar, I mean, pretty much everybody knows when their meetings are, are going to be, if they're on the first Tuesday of every month at a specific time, you set up the recurring meeting, you leave it in the calendar, it's not that difficult, if you cancel one, you only cancel that single meeting in the series, there's ways to do it, you guys are making a, a mountain out of a little bit, like an anthill, in a sense, if, if, if the IT department needs some, some coaching, or some maybe assistance, I'll be glad to talk to them, to, on my own dime, to help them out.
Okay.
I mean, I use Zoom, I use Teams, I use all of that stuff, and it's not that difficult.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes, I, I have to ask a question, are we voting on the requirement, or?
Voting on required the use of electronic telecommunications for all meetings of Luzerne County Council.
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Wait, are we, are we sure, do we understand we're fully voting for him, Mr. Chairman? I think you've got a good question there.
Here's, here's what we're voting for, we have a motion on the floor to adopt a resolution requiring the use of electronic and telecommunications for all meetings of Luzerne County Council, that's us, that's going to be.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What we've been doing since last March?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sagan votes yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Miss Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
In the, in the future, if IT has anything like that they'd like to share, I sent that resolution out over, probably, I guess probably almost a week ago, that they possibly could have sent, oh, even if it was Friday, they could have responded, sent us a mail.
I think we had this on the work session last time.
Right, so, so, I mean, the IT department simply could have sent that information along, it would have been very helpful for us to have that, knowing that it was gonna cost that kind of money and add additional staff and all that, instead, we wait until the day of the meeting, and we, we shit, sandbagged the county council, just like the attorney said they don't like being done to them, we get done to us, I don't think it's fair.
Okay. We're down to number seven. Motion to introduce an ordinance to amend the Luzerne County Accountability Conduct and Ethics Code in accordance with the Home Rule Charter of Luzerne County, do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Miss Radel? Do we have a second for Miss Radel?
Are we on number seven?
Yes, I'll second, I'll second that, Mr. McGinley.
I think Ms. McDermott got in ahead of you there, Mr. Griffith.
That's okay.
On to question.
I have a question, this is Leanne.
Go ahead.
What's the reason, what's the reason why it's confidential? Did we get an answer on that, I know we talked about it, but?
We talked about this, Mr. McGinley, if I might, it's Linda. Okay, and so, you know, I, I've worked a lot on the codes over the years, and the revision to the code that happened shortly after Home Rule was to add the due process in so that there's an attorney who investigates. So what happens when you file a complaint is that it goes to an attorney who investigates whether the complaint has substance, and so you are not, if someone files a complaint against you, and it is found to have no substance, you don't see the complaint, you don't know who the complainant is, because it was found to have no substance, and it's not fall, gonna be followed through with anything. And if the complaint has substance, then of course you're notified of the complaint, and you have an opportunity to, to, you know, to find out about what the complaint is and, defend yourself, or, you know, come, come to a, a hearing about it, but the entire point of not informing you of something that has no substance is so that if someone reports something, it's anonymous, it's, it's kept confidential, and if it is found to not have any substance, and it's not going anywhere, that you would not maybe take retribution against someone for filing a complaint. And I understand Mr. Griffith's, you know, issue with this is that there is also a provision in the Ethics Code that says that if you are. are, if you file frivolous complaints, that you should be held to task for that. And, you know, he would like someone who has a complaint filed against them to have the ability to file another complaint against the person who filed a complaint that was found to have no substance. But the, the fact is that if people take the time to file a complaint, I think that for the most part, they consider those to be serious complaints. And whether they are found by the lawyer, by the attorney to have no substance or not, that person took the time to register a complaint with the understanding that there was confidentiality involved in that. And the point of the confidentiality is to encourage people to bring ethical issues to light. So even if it's not found to be an ethical violation, someone came forward with an issue that they felt was worthy to be looked into. And it would generally have to be someone who was an employee of the county who is aware of something going on that they thought was unethical. And, you know, whether it ended up being unethical or not doesn't negate the fact that someone has to feel comfortable coming forward without worrying about retribution. So that, in essence, is the, the issue here, whether someone should have, have knowledge of the complaint and, and who filed the complaint before it is found to have any substance or not.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Howke, correct me if I'm wrong, we did an original ACE Commission code and then we did this revision because of some things that came up because of the way the first code was written, correct?
Right. And the, the issue with the first code was that everything went directly to the ACE Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And there was the idea that there was not due process, that the ACE Commission was then investigating and acting as the judge and jury as well. And so there was not that step of due process in the middle where there would be an investigation that someone would necessarily, there would be a, another step in the process where then the attorney now who investigated it would bring it to the ACE Commission and say, you know, I think there is an issue here and this is now something that the ACE Commission needs to look into. In the first version of the Ethics Code, the ACE Commission handled everything. They did the investigating and there was a sense that it wasn't done at an arm's length. There wasn't enough of, of a due process that was involved in that. And, you know, we have talked over the years about the fact that there are some things that need to be revised in the Ethics Code. And, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that, that the Ethics Code is perfect. It certainly does need some revisions. I'm just not convinced that this is one of them and that it needs to be done right at this time, that we need to put something into the middle of that process right now. I think it really does need a good, long look.
Thank you.
Another point, Mr. McGinley, is, is that there are many professional groups that work the same way when a complaint, an ethics complaint is made against one of them. So before, if it's unfounded, there's, there's nothing done and hopefully, you know, if it was given to the person, there could be the potential for retaliation.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
So I, I find it very interesting how we can throw the words "due process" around cavalierly. And we have Ms. Sedman, who's an attorney, knows what due process is. We have attorneys on, on the computer here. They're attorneys that know what due process is. And I find it very disingenuous when somebody says, "Well, we wanted to make sure we follow due process," yet we don't tell the person who the complaint is about that there's been a complaint filed on them and what the complaint is so they can file, file for, to mount a defense of some sort. That's due process.
No, that's-
Well, well, yeah, well, okay. All right, so we won't get, we won't get into a legal argument here, Ms. Sedman, but the fact of the matter is, if someone files a complaint against me, there is no restraint on that person to tell anyone that they filed that complaint. None. So if I'm a, if I'm a regular person and I want to file a complaint against Mr. McGinley just at election time, just so he can get some bad press, I can do that. And Mr. McGinley has absolutely no recourse, or myself, or anybody else on his council, has absolutely no recourse because we haven't seen the complaint. All we know is that somebody went to the newspaper and said, "I filed a complaint against Mr. McGinley or Mr. Griffith or Ms. Sedman or any one of us and say, 'Well, I think that they did something wrong, so I filed a complaint.'" Frivolous is all get out, but it doesn't matter because the attorney's just going to say it's frivolous and we're never going to see the complaint, so it doesn't matter to us. No, I think it matters a great deal to us. I think the fact of the matter is if somebody says some, "I did something wrong," I should have the ability to state that it didn't happen in, in open, just like they have the ability to state in open that it did. And that doesn't happen now.
Mr. Griffith, it does. Because there, the other provision in the Ethics Code is that anything surrounding the filing of that complaint is supposed to be confidential. So the person who files the complaint is, is really violating the Ethics Code themselves if they do go public. And at that point, if someone goes public and says, "Look, I filed a complaint," and, and, you know, gets it out in the public before you get into the whole investigation of whether the complaint has merit or not, there is an ethical complaint. And you can file an, an ethics complaint about, about someone who does that because they're not supposed to reveal the fact that they filed a complaint. And, you know, there-
Where's that written? Where's that written in our Ethics Code?
It is in the Ethics Code.
Mr. Griffith, excuse me. Ms. Sedman's been waiting. Go ahead, Ms. Sedman.
No, no, that's okay. I'm just saying that I don't think that Mr. Griff, I think you have a very narrow, a narrow interpretation. You don't understand due process. You have to find out if the complaint is valid first, if there's any, you know, if the complaint has any merit. And then, of course, you can respond. But if the complaint has no merit and their step is to have it investigated confidentially, then you don't have any way to have due process against something that has no merit there. You're, you're getting your apples and your oranges mixed up and the procedures mixed up.
Well, all I, all I know is when somebody files something against me in the pro bono attorney's office, I get a copy of it right away. And it doesn't matter if it has merit or not. Then we go to court, we argue the case.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to introduce the ordinance. Requires four votes to be introduced. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sney?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Uh, no.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three S eight, no.
Thank you. Now, we added one item.
Mr. McGinley, can we make sure that that's posted online, under failed ordinances, that it was introduced and failed, please?
Hey, Mr. Griffith, we'll take care of those things. Thank you, though. Number eight, we added this to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. And if you just would take a moment and let me read, since it was-
Yes.
Something that we just added to the agenda. We have a resolution of the Luzerne County Council to authorize the formation of an ad hoc committee, appointed by the chairman, to select outside counsel to represent Luzerne County Council, to present the issue to the courts, to allow the court to make an unbiased decision regarding decision made by Luzerne County Election Board on April 21st, 2021. We'll hold a special election for the Office of District Attorney in November of 2021. That's the title. Does anybody want me to read the body of the resolution? Is the title sufficient? Everybody should have an opportunity. It should be hopefully in front of you if you got your email, okay?
I've read it.
So we have that resolution. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second? Ms. Radel? On to question.
On to questions, Chair?
Go ahead, Mr.
On the question.
Wait, Mr. Haas first and Ms. How, please.
I do have a few, but I just want to ask one first and I'll certainly defer to other members. But does the election board even have that authority to declare that, this election? Do they even have that per state statute?
Absolutely. Yes, they do. The election board has the authority over voter registration and the conduct of elections and what appears on the ballot or not.
Even if it's contrary to what it appears to be the recent law that was passed by the state? Even if it's in, in contradiction of that?
Well, I, I, I think there are various interpretations of whether it's contradicting the new state statute or not. They, but they have the authority to designate what's, what's on the ballot.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Mr. Haas, are you, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
I'm sorry. Mr. Haas?
I'll defer to other members. I'm, I'm good for now. I'll listen to this.
Okay. Ms. How?
Yes, um, you know, how many lawyers are we going to pay? I, I don't think when, that the, the answer to anything is usually to involve another lawyer. So we've already, we are already paying the lawyer for the election board. We are already paying the Office of Law. We already are paying someone else who got, gave an opinion to the Office of Law. And now we're going to go outside because, and I don't, I really don't know why, but we're going to go outside and try to get yet another opinion from someone else who is then going to take it to the courts. And my first, so, you know, of course, I, I'm opposed to this. Like, why would we get yet another legal person involved and why would we go to the courts? I don't even know that we have any standing in this case. In my opinion, we appointed a board of elections. They had the authority to decide when that election will be held. They looked at the opinions that were given to them and they made a decision. And, you know, I don't know how it involves council. There's going to be a special election at some time. The board of elections has made their decision about when it's going to be. And I think if somebody with some standing in it wants to challenge it, maybe they could, but I certainly don't see why council would pay for another lawyer to get involved in the whole thing.
Can I just, Leanne?
Kendra, if I, if I could just interject quickly. I think the question of why, sorry, am I okay to talk to him?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I think the question of why another lawyer should have been asked after Attorney Butera gave an opinion and then we continued to look for another opinion. I think he's been giving sound legal advice to the election board and the election bureau for plenty of years. And I think, you know, he gave that opinion. We went to find another outside opinion. And now I think we need, we need an unbiased opinion from the courts because we have two conflicting opinions and we have an election board with two members that abstained.
But to be clear, we did not go looking for another opinion. The Office of Law got another opinion. So council did not go looking for another opinion. The board of elections did not go looking for another opinion. So we already have quite a few lawyers involved and the board of elections made the decision. And I, I mean, if you don't like the, the decision, I don't know that you have any standing to challenge that. I, if the Republican Party wants to challenge it because they don't like the, the date of the special election, then maybe the party wants to challenge it, but I don't see why the bill should come to council for someone to mount a challenge to it. I'm fine with the board of elections' decision.
Right. And just for the record, I just want to say that I'm not, I'm not picking a side either way. I'm just saying that we have two conflicting opinions and I would like the court to decide. So I don't, I don't, I just want to make it clear that I wasn't saying I don't like the decision either way. I'm just saying that I would like, I would like the courts to decide.
I understand that, but why?
I, this is what-
Mr. McGinley, this is Attorney Croco. May I make a statement?
Yes.
I just want to clarify some things. And I want to take County Council back to March 23rd. And if you recall, on March 23rd, we were in an executive session discussing the litigation that was brought by Stephanie Salavantis and Sam Sangualdiolci against council regarding the requirement to resign, to run, and the appointment of Attorney Salavantis' successor. When we were in executive session, Attorney Cosgrove was representing us in this matter. And the reason why he was representing us in this matter is that we, the county, needed to hire outside counsel. I could not, and no, and no person, no attorney in the Office of Law could represent the county or the district attorney's office in that litigation. I reached out to Attorney Cosgrove for a number of reasons. One, at that point, I want everybody to remember that the situation was in flux. There was an issue of whether the courts needed to decide, if council would decide. Attorney Cosgrove has sat as a judge on the Court of Common Pleas, on the Commonwealth Court, and he was chief counsel for the administrative offices of the Pennsylvania courts. He had written opinions regarding the status of home rule counties. And he had argued seminal cases regarding election issues. And in his role as counsel for AOPC, he advised courts across the Commonwealth. It was during that executive session that it was announced that the governor signed Senate bills 84, 85, and 86 into law. That evening, without any approval from me, Attorney Butera made a statement to the press that the election would take place in November of 2023. The next morning, approximately 7:30 in the morning, I get an email and I get a text message from Eric Marks. And there were several messages, but the one that Eric Marks directed was, "How does the DA serve to the first Monday in January, filling the, following the next municipal election that is at least 90 days after the vacancy?" That means that Sam Sangualdiolci serves until 1/3/22. When I received that text message and those emails and reading the articles that there was an opinion from the solicitor, an assistant solicitor, that the election took place, should take place in November of 2023, I reached out to Attorney Cosgrove. Because at that point, the litigation that was brought by Stephanie Salavantis and Sangualdiolci was not concluded. As a matter of fact, that wasn't withdrawn until the following week. So at that point, I reached out to Attorney Cosgrove because this issue could have been litigated in that ongoing litigation. And I asked him what his opinion was. So at that point, litigation is ongoing. We have a question from the press. And I believe that journalists are the fourth estate. We have to answer them. But more importantly, I believe that the people of Luzerne County deserved an answer. And so I did my due diligence. And I made a decision to include a memorandum that Attorney Butera took ownership in writing. I made the decision to give that to the election board along with the opinion of Attorney Cosgrove so they can make a fully informed decision. I want to be clear about this. I was as transparent as I possibly could be. I was as transparent as I possibly could be because I knew allegations such as the ones that are being raised right now will be leveled against me. And it was my duty to provide all the information that is necessary for the board to make a decision. I also want everybody to be clear that I make the decisions and the final opinions for the office of law. That is my obligation as the chief county solicitor. People agree with me, people disagree with me. I get ridiculed. People make comments about me in the newspaper. Doesn't matter. This council and all of the boards and the commissions that we represent and the Luzerne County government and the Luzerne County people can be assured that I will provide all the relevant information that individual decision makers need to make. I also want to be clear that Attorney Butera has been assigned to the election board and the election bureau for years. Predates home rule. He is a wealth of information and I respect his opinion, just like I respect all the opinions of all my assistant solicitors. I also want to be clear that our workload in the office of law has increased substantially over the last two, two and a half years. And I'm pairing the solicitors' assignments. So not only does Attorney Butera do work for the election board and the election bureau, but Attorney Raddick does as well. I also am involved. I participate as much I can in representing the various divisions and agencies and boards because I believe that that's what a true leader does. I need to get my hands just as dirty and put my hands in the dirt just like my assistants do. That's the only way that I think that I can get their respect. So I want everyone to be clear that I gave all the information to the election board. And I don't know how more transparent I could have been in this matter. I will also tell County Counsel that I've always taken the position that if counsel disagrees with an opinion from the office of law and the majority want another opinion, I would not stand in their way. And that I would respect that decision. But I want to be clear about any statements about bias on anybody's part that was involved in this. All the lawyers, Attorney Butera, Attorney Cosgrove, and myself gave our opinions based on what our interpretation of the laws. There was no bias at all on anybody's part.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Lynda. If I could just say, I'm not making allegations, Ramilda, and I hope that's not how you understood what I said. And I do think it's, you know, it's certainly great that you gave all the opinions to the Board of Elections. My point is not, you know, how we got all those opinions. My point is that the Board of Elections got all of those opinions and they made the decision. And I think that counsel has to, you know, live with the opinion of the Board of Elections. What standing do we have, Ramilda? Do we have standing in a case like this to take anything to the courts and say, "You decide whether we should have an election"?
Well, I did not, I didn't mean to imply that you said that there was any bias involved. I'm going to defer that answer to Attorney DeLuca.
No, I mean, I actually just found out about this a little while ago. I guess my question is, what, how is, like, the advocates for this? How is this a counsel issue, this specific?
This is Leanne. Can I just state a couple? Okay. So two of the election board members abstained. So they, they didn't understand everything. And I understand, I read through those, you know, the email from Mr. Butera as well as Mr. Cosgrove. So it was very confusing for me. I don't have a legal mind. But I understand two of the board members did not understand it and they abstained. Why, what was the rush for making that decision? Why were they not allowed more time? Or, and again, in that case, I would say a third opinion because both attorneys made very good arguments, but who's right? You know, I, just like Kendra said, I'm not making any decision that either one is right. However, there's that question and people have posed that, constituents have posed that question. You know, there's something that you have to do, that you could do about this because we don't know what the right decision is. So why is that a problem for counsel to ask for the court to make the decision?
I think, I'm sorry. I think the, the fact is, I think the office, Ramilda, had recognized the fact that Attorney Butera had made, given an opinion. There were discussions among the lawyers in the office that strenuously disagreed with the position that Attorney Butera took. And I think Ramilda did what, certainly what I would have done, which is...
I'm sharing arguments about Judge Cosgrove's. You know, there were some things in there that he left out and not everybody agreed with his opinion, but get them off before I work with that.
If I may, Councilperson McDermott, both Mr. Butera, Attorney Butera and Attorney Cosgrove were at the election board meeting. They were there. They answered the questions of the election board. Three members of the election board voted to put it on the ballot. I, I don't know why the two other members didn't feel, you know, that they didn't understand.
If they weren't confident enough, then why was there such a rush to make the decision? They feel that they, you know, I could understand. There are times we don't have the information and we don't know what decision to make. So why rush into it?
Actually, the issue was on the agenda prior to the meeting that they voted on. And the board did make a decision to postpone the decision. So the members of the board could have asked to postpone the decision. Nobody raised that. And I have to tell you, I did make a concerted decision that I wanted the board to make a decision, one way or the other. I don't, I don't have, I don't have a pony in this race. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, all I want is a competent district attorney in Luzerne County. And we've been blessed that we've had a series of very competent district attorneys. The reality is, we went through last year's election with litigation at all, the 11th hour during the vote, during the election, the day before election day, the day of election day, the day after. And it was, the Election Inquiry Committee and counsel knows how difficult it was to navigate. And I've articulated that position consistently. I wanted to give everyone involved, everyone who's interested in the outcome of this issue enough time either to make a decision of who would be on the ballot or make a decision to challenge the case in court. And I didn't, I felt it would be remiss if I waited. But it was up to the board. If the board wanted to continue the...
Well, fine. Again, we're not, I'm not saying, and I, I don't know, I can't speak for other council members. But again, it's not that we are making a decision. It's just that the decision, you'd have two different opinions. And again, two of the board members did not have or felt they didn't have enough information to make a decision. So, you know, that's, that's where my problem is, that there should be another opinion on it. And let's say Sam wins the November special election and he's going to finish serving the remaining two years from Stephanie's term. And then what happens if he wins again in 2023? Would that be considered his second term? Because a district attorney serves three, four-year terms. So you think, how is that going to work? Do we even have a procedure in place for all of this? You know, if it just goes on to a special election in November, are all those details figured out?
Actually, actually, that's, whether or not there's election, that question comes up anyway. And if the charter applies, then I believe he's in his first election. But the charter does address that issue. And that issue, regardless of whether an election takes place or not, is already on the table. So that's...
But is there any state law, is there state law that's going to contradict the charter? Which, you know, we have the problem with the state law contradicting the charter. So is that going to throw a wrench into there as well?
Well, it might, but that's not the issue that's being challenged and being raised here. Because regardless of whether there's an election in November of 2021 or November of 2023, that issue is on the table. So, and it's on the table for whoever is in the DA seat on January 2022. So the other, the other point I want to make, and I'm not going to belabor this, is that Bradford County is going through the same situation that we are. And I spoke to their solicitor and they are going to have an election in November of 2021.
And I did know that, but up until this point, has this, and I understand that this has not been the case, that there has never in Pennsylvania history been a special election for the district attorney. So up until this point, I believe that there has never been.
That I don't know, but I know the statute was amended to include counties of the second class, 2A class, and the third-class county into counties that of the fourth through eight-class county to have the same procedure. And Senate Bill 86, which I believe became Act 9, modified the home rule law that, for the appointment of the district attorney, that home rule charters, you know, that the state law trumps the home rule charters. So to answer your question, the new statute was taken to effect immediately and...
Regarding the primary day deadline, right?
Regarding the term, regarding the term, yes.
And, and again, you know, like you say, just to be clear, because I know Lynda brought up about Republican and Democrat. I don't feel that it's a Republican or Democrat thing. Again, it's just a matter, and it's not for the DA's office, it's not against it. Or, you know, for the office of law or against the office of law. It's a matter of, you know, in my opinion, having two different opinions, having two of the election board members that were not sure to make a decision and wanting someone to, you know, the courts to make the decision on that. Because I don't even think, with the new state law, that didn't change, that didn't change anything. So that, that's going to come into play with the special election in November.
It did, it did. By the language, by the language of setting the term, it did. But I don't know, what would you have had me do? Not release Attorney Butera's memo? Would it have been, tell me, would it have been better if I had just released one opinion?
No. I mean, once you, once you had the both of them out there. But all that did, again, to me, and I can understand with the election board members being confused. I was totally confused. So I don't know who's right.
So you're telling me, so what you're saying then is that I just should have, I should not have been transparent. I should not have released that information. I should have made the decision on my own. And then, and then what would people have said? What should I have done?
If I could just interject, if Ramilda and Leanne don't mind, it's Kendra.
If I could just reiterate my question, because I still didn't get an answer to it. What standing does counsel have in this matter?
So, Lynda, I'll, could I answer the question?
I don't believe counsel has any standing. I don't, I don't see, I can't imagine under what circumstances counsel could even bootstrap a declaratory judgment to an action that was taken by one of their independent boards. So, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just saying this is outside of the purview of counsel at this, at this point. Certainly, the election board has whatever options the election board has for requesting opinions or requesting another opinion or going against opinions that were offered. But counsel itself, I don't know. And again, counsel could do, you could hire another attorney to come in. I agree with, with Mrs. Howe that it, I think it would be futile. And the other option might be to have conversations with the election board and ask them to pursue whatever options they would have. But counsel itself, I don't see, I don't, can't imagine how you get into court on, on an action by one of your boards.
Okay, let Leanne...
Well, Kendra, you wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Kendra, please. I'm sorry.
So everyone keeps asking, like, why, why would counsel get involved? I think it's because it's the DA's office. It's an extremely important, complicated legal issue. We have two opinions and I think we get ahead of it, be proactive, ask the court to tell us what the right answer is. Or else if we, if we sit on it and do nothing, then we're going to, like, later on, be picking a side and paying money anyways to defend something that we don't even know is right. So I think we get ahead of it, we be proactive and we try to push this to the courts to give us the right, the correct answer.
That's, but there's, there are standing requirements in order to do that. You can't just go to the courts because you have a question that you, a burning question that other people, that people are asking. It's, in this case, the election board made a legal vote. The argument would be that, I don't even know what argument we would make to... And again, that's, if counsel wants to do it, you certainly could hire a lawyer to come in. But that lawyer is going to be bound by the same rules we all are, which is, there are rules to get into court in the first place.
How, how was an outside lawyer hired to overturn the election board solicitor?
First of all, yeah, first of all, from back when I was chief, back under the commissioners, all the way through home rule, when I was interim chief, I know the same thing when Attorney Pedri was chief solicitor. The chief solicitor is the one who issues the, basically, the policy of the office. I believe what happened in this circumstance was Attorney Butera gave an opinion on, basically, on something that there was very brand-new legislation on. The office collaborated, under Ramilda's leadership, agreed that that opinion may have been an error. And in order to, I believe, as much as possible, check our, our own opinions, because now we had one on one side, one on the other. Ramilda sent it to Cosgrove, who was already involved in the litigation to begin with. So technically, Butera gave an opinion. A consensus in the office of law determined that they did not agree with that opinion. And then it was sent to Attorney Cosgrove, and Attorney Cosgrove issued his opinion. So it's not a matter of just two different lawyers disagreeing. It's a matter of, basically, that a consensus in the office of law on one side, Attorney Butera on the other, and then Attorney Cosgrove had issued his opinion.
And if he was, if he was involved in that litigation, is that technically the same litigation? If Judge Cosgrove was involved with the prior one, is this? I don't know. I don't know if it is the same. So is it the same litigation?
It had to do with the appointment of the district attorney when the sitting district attorney resigned. So the... So the, when the governor signed that law into effect, when we were in executive session discussing the case, that issue was part of, part of the litigation. Because it had to do with the appointment of a district attorney. When you look at the title of the, of the new law, it has to do with the appointment of the district attorney. And it speaks to situations where there's a resignation of a sitting DA and the appointment process. So, yes.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Yeah, Mr. Irvin here, Steve.
Go ahead.
So what I'm looking at part of the law, I mean, back in the history of the DA's law, back in the 1850s, the term of the DA used to be three years. If it was, if there was a vacancy back in the day, then person that would fill that vacancy served out the full term or the rest of the term of that three-year period. And then, I guess, over the course of history, it was changed to a four-year term, along with other municipal and county offices. Now, the Board of Elections, did they take a vote for a special election? Like, the term "special election"? Or did they just simply say that they were going to do an election during the municipal election? Because there's a differentiation between the, you know, the two words "special election", meaning that that would be a day other than a municipal primary or a general election.
This election will take place at the time of the general election.
Well, people are using the term "special election".
They are using the terms, they are using the term "special election", and it, it's a type of special election.
But it's not, because you look.
It's a by-election. It's actually called a by-election. It's a situation where someone fills out a term or is appointed to a certain point of a term, and then they have to be elected. That's, that's what the nomenclature is.
It's a municipal, like, a general election, though. Special election is any other election outside the scope of the prescribed dates of the primary or the general election. That's what the term "special election" means.
Right.
It cannot be one of the two days. It cannot be on the primary day, and it cannot be on the general day.
Yes, it can, because it's a by-election. I, I did read the law.
I've read it myself, okay?
And it's a by-election. And I spoke to the solicitor from Bradford County, who agrees. And I did discuss this with various people who are knowledgeable about elections.
Well, I mean, the fact is, these are all opinions. And, and, you know, obviously, you took it upon yourself to go get this opinion when nobody really truly asked for it. I mean, I understand you're doing your diligence on the issue, but nobody asked for Mr. Cosgrove's opinion at that point in time. This, this became an issue once, once you created the sort of monster in the room at this point.
And nobody asked for Mr. Butera's opinion either. But I want to be clear to counsel that my charge, the charge and the duty of the Office of Law is not only to represent Luzern County, but we, and, and under our rules of professional conduct, we also provide counsel. So we did this early today. We do it on numerous occasions, and this situation was no different.
Well, I mean, to me, it's selective enforcement, selective representation when, when, when you're doing certain issues. Depending on the topic of the day or the week, in my opinion, with this county, it's very inconsistent with the rule of law. You know, it, it really, when I look at the way the law is sort of interpreted in this county, it's only when it suits the needs of management or there's an agenda behind the scenes somewhere. I mean, that's the way I see it. But, but when you look at the law itself and you look at history with the DA's office, you know, like I said, there is a difference. I mean, you look at some of the case law, and the term "special election" is sort of already in certain case law, because I was looking it up and researching it. It cannot be coined as, on, on the general election day or a general, or a municipal primary day. So special election is, if somebody dies and they want to have a special election on January 5th or January 19th, that's a special election day. It wouldn't be, you know, the municipal election day itself. And I mean, there's, there's a line right in the Pennsylvania election code that states that, what the definition of what special election means. It's basically, probably no more than 20 words.
I, I just, I have to, I have to say something. So, okay, so Mr. Butera, Attorney Butera, is the solicitor for the Election Bureau? And he's not allowed?
He's actually assigned to the Election Bureau with Paul Erratic.
So he's not allowed to give an opinion?
Obviously, he is, because I took it, I took his opinion. I took his opinion and I circulated it. So obviously, he, he is allowed to give an opinion. And normally, when I have debates with my assistants, because we don't always disagree, we come to a conclusion. I can tell you that when Attorney Butera made his statement to the press, it was not made, he did not confer with me. He made that statement to the press on his own. And the next day, I got an inquiry. The next morning, maybe not even 12 hours later, I get an inquiry from the press that there's a, that there's an issue with this. At that point, at that point, it was my obligation to do due diligence. So obviously, I did not stifle Attorney Butera's opinion. I didn't do that because I wanted to be as transparent as possible, because I didn't want to be accused of bias. And, and so that's why I submitted the memorandum that Attorney Butera advised that he took ownership of.
And I wasn't finished either.
Sorry.
So when the new district attorney was appointed, what type of legal filings were sent into, like, any personator's office? Did it explain when his end date was on his term in any of those legal, in any legal paperwork? Like, in the personator's office or anything like that? Is there a term defined on any of the documents? I'm sure that they're either notarized or signed by a judge that he was sworn in. Is there a term defined anywhere on any legal paperwork that could settle this issue immediately?
I did not find any.
Okay, so there's no, you know, like, everybody that's elected typically has a four-year term, and that's, that's usually on an election certificate. Granted, he's, you know, stepping up from the law. But there, there was none in any legal filing at all?
None that I found on the personatory viewer.
Okay. And then, you know, the other thing is, is I don't know how, I mean, technically speaking, he's filling the seat, so it's no longer vacant. And what the Board of Elections is do is, or what they're trying to do at this point is create a vacancy, when I think in our Home Rule Charter, counsel is the only one that really can create that vacancy in certain.
Actually, the vacancy took place on March, I believe, March 25th, when, when Stephanie, that triggered the, that triggered the vacancy. And that triggered the, and that triggered the application of the new statute.
Right. I mean, quite honestly, I still think it should go to court. I mean, I get what you're saying, too, and I see both sides of the argument. I just see that there's, you know, having to discuss this hours of length, numerous emails that obviously were never answered. When I sent them out, and, you know, some of them are coming to light today on this meeting. You know, I can form my own opinion on what's going on, obviously, in my own mind. But, you know, the way I sense things is that there's an agenda behind the scenes. And quite honestly, it's going to be a political fight. But I honestly think that the courts should, should, someone with the current black robe should adjudicate this matter and not the attorneys that are giving their opinions at this point that don't have a gavel.
And I.
Mr. Chair, can I have some follow-up questions?
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else before Mr. Hauss comes back on?
Yes.
And Steve, I'm going to cut you off. Are you done there, sir? I didn't mean to do that to you, but.
Yeah, I'm done, Harry. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks. Harry Hauss.
Go ahead, Chair.
Go ahead.
So, Ramilda, were you the one that drafted Councilman Radel's resolution tonight?
No.
No, she, she, she called me at 5:00 today to inform me that she was submitting the resolution. And I'm not going to speak for her, but she said she wrote it. She, because she complimented the Office of Law of having to write resolution, so.
Well, Kendra, I mean, it's, it's for Kendra, then, I guess. It's for you, to Ramilda, because I look at the, you know, in the, in the state statute that was passed in March. I'm reading through it, as, as everybody did, and it's, it's using a lot of electionees. And I'm seeing the 13th Tuesday after the second, you know, Groundhog Day after the leap year. You know, there's all these crazy dates in there. It's really hard to follow. What is, what was the spirit of that law? Was it, was it simply to, to fill the vacancy? Or was it, was it to fill the vacancy and make sure that the term was, was finished by the, by the deputy? I don't know if I'm making sense there, because.
You are. You are.
That's the, that's the correct, the argument there. What's the spirit of the state statute? And I'm, if you can explain that better, I know there's differing opinions, but what was decided? Because I think that might clear up this, a lot of this.
If you just give me, just give me one second. If you look at the Pennsylvania General Assembly Bill Information, Regular Session 2021, 2022, Senate Bill 84, the prime sponsor was Senator Martin. And there's a memo attached to that. And it's called "The Succession in the Office of District Attorney". And I'll read it to you. It's a couple paragraphs. "We plan to introduce a pack", this is dated January 20th, 2021. "We plan to introduce a package of three bills that will bring consistency to the rules of succession when a vacancy occurs in the Office of County District Attorney. Currently, the various municipal codes governing succession state that in Class 2, Class 2A, and Class 3 counties, if a vacancy occurs in the Office of District Attorney, then the judge of the Court of Common Pleas shall point, quote, 'a competent person to fill the office during the balance of the unexpired term', end quote. However, in counties of the 4th through 8th class, the judges of the Court of Common Pleas must appoint the first assistant district attorney to fill the vacancy, assuming they meet the eligibility requirements under Section 1401 of the county code. In this scenario, the first assistant filling the vacancy does not automatically serve for the remainder of the term, but must face election at the next municipal election. In some counties, under a Home Rule Charter, a replacement is appointed by the county commissioners. The first assistant is the logical choice to fill such a vacancy. They know the cases, the community, the staff, and office culture. Inserting a potential political decision into the process is not prudent. The three bills will provide greater transparency and consistency for Class 2 through Class 8 counties, including those under the Home Rule Charter. Please join us in co-sponsoring this package of legislation." So it's clear that the purpose was that the vacancy does not automatically serve the remainder of the term and that it must face an election at the next municipal election. So even the spirit of the law in the memo that's on the Senate page supports that position. So, and, you know, as I said before, I, I just want to be clear that this was not.
To clarify, Ramilda, though? Yeah, I understand what you're trying to say, but to clarify, so that was, I thought you said classes 4 through 6. It was automatically the first assistant. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
No, 2, 2A, and 3.
Always 6.
2, 2A, and 2, 2A, and 3. Classes 4 through 8 already, already, already had the procedure that the court appoints, not for the remainder of the term, but until the next municipal election. So what they did was they brought in counties of the 2nd, 2A, and 3rd class into that group of counties, 4 through 8. And they changed the Home Rule law.
So, all right, so that, that's helpful. But at the same time, and I know municipal election, you've got the municipal, municipal primary election. Councilman Irvin was talking about that before. My, my big, my big beef with this is that we are now taking away the right of the people to choose their best candidate. We're taking away the right of the Democrats and the Republicans to put their, their best candidate forward to face off in the municipal primary. Or the general, the general primary. I know the terminology is a little off there. So to me, you're laying the power brokers then decide and taking that away from the people. And that, I think, I think that actually muddies the water. I think that's less transparent. That's, if it's a state issue, what am I going to do? I'm just a lowly councilperson here in the corner of northeastern Pennsylvania. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it fits.
I see your point, but that, that logic would mean that it's better to have no public participation than some public participation. And what will happen is, and it's been, you know, it's been in other elections, all the registered parties in Luzern County will be able to choose a candidate. And a political body and an individual will be able to file a petition to put their name on the, on the ballot. So I see your point, except that it's, if you take that logic, it would be no public participation is better than some. It's like going to a restaurant and saying, "I'm not going to order an entree because they don't have appetizers on the menu." So, you know, I didn't write the state statute, trust me. It's not, it's not the statute that I, I would have written. But I, you know, it, it seems to me that the language of the statute is clear that there wasn't this intent that the appointed district attorney, you know, fill out a term, especially because they put in, you know, the term is until the first Monday after the next municipal election. You know, I wish some of you would run for Senate or the General Assembly and, and say, "Please, please, make, make the statutes more clear." That would be a great thing. I, I would really appreciate it.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Kendra.
Oh, I was just going to say, so I obviously don't sit and read state statutes as much as Ramilda or some other members of counsel or the Office of Law, obviously. But I kind of took it as it was trying to, like, you know, have some sort of consistency to, you know, to the Office of District Attorney. So, I mean, if it is, if the purpose is to have consistency, now we have a DA that's serving, like, six months. Parties appoint someone new. We don't know who that's going to be. So then that DA will, if I'm understanding, would only serve a two-year term. So then we're changing the term of DA. Then we have another election. Like, I just feel like it's, it's inconsistent. And like I said, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
That, that makes sense, except they changed, for the class counties of 2, 2A, and 3, it was a judicial appointment for the remainder of the term. And, you know, the legislature and the governor agreed to change that. You know, if they didn't change it, we may not be having this discussion.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. McGinnon? Walter?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, the only, the questions that I have are, I mean, I, I understand, I understand all of the issues that the Office of Law is raising here. I, I find it very hard to believe that Mr. Butera took it upon himself to draft an opinion, strictly in a vacuum, and put it out there all by himself, without any direction from anybody, to say, "Yeah, well, you know what? I think I'll just sit down and I'll draft an opinion based on what I see is going on, and, and I'll just pass it out." I find that very distant, hard to believe in, in this county. I think there was probably some direction, or he was asked to do that. I don't know. That's just my assumption at this point. that's just my assumption at this point, but what's most disturbing to me is, he gives an opinion, and then it doesn't seem to fit the agenda of some folks, and we go out and get another opinion, which fits the agenda of everybody, so now we're going to fight for that opinion because that fits our agenda. We won't fight that Mr. Butera's opinion is correct, we'll fight that Mr. Butera's position is incorrect. Why are we not fighting for the opinion of Mr. Butera? Why is he less knowledgeable than Mr. Cosgrove? I don't see that. I think Mr. Butera is just as knowledgeable in, in the, in his, his opinion, and, you know, I think maybe it's because his opinion came back that it wasn't, it doesn't fit what we want it to fit.
Mm-huh.
That's, that's my, my, I'm not done, just hang on, just hold your water, I'll be there. Um, that's my, that's my concern.
Who are you speaking to, Mr. Griffith?
I, I'm speaking to people who are making comments while I'm speaking. So, I'm, I'm just saying that that's what I see. Now, I mean, the concern that I have is, I mean, let's, let's just be as open as we can be. If we want to talk transparency, let's talk transparency. Does Mr. Pedri want this position? I've asked that question before, I'll ask it again. That's the elephant in the room here. Clearly, that's, and nobody wants to address the elephant in the room, that's the elephant in the room. Is that the reason why the opinion was changed? Is because there's a move afoot to put certain people in that position? If that's not the case, then that's fine, I'll, I'll acquiesce and say that I, I, you know, my, my theory is incorrect, and, you know, I made a mistake on my thought, but that seems to be the problem that we're having here, is why was the opinion changed? The Charter says also that if there's a vacancy in the office of District Attorney after nineteen months, that that person sits there until the term is up. Well, why don't we have a special election for the District Attorney after nineteen months, then? Why don't we have one in April of, or May of next year for the District Attorney, if in fact that position became vacant, uh, after the eighteenth month, as according to our Charter? Would we be able to do that?
Well, actually...
And let me just quickly finish.
Please.
And then the last point that I want to ask is, when Mr. Sangwaduch decides, decides that he's going to sue the county, because we're going to have an election to abolish his posi, to have another person take that position, and we all probably have a pretty guy, good idea that's probably going to happen, is he going to sue the County Council? Or is he going to sue the Board of Elections? Because apparently, we don't have standing, apparently, we don't have a dog in this fight. So if Mr. District Attorney decides that he wants to sue us for, you know, having a special election to abolish his, his seat and put somebody else there, would he be, would he list the County Council members, or would he list the board members of Mr. Butera?
That's up to, uh, that's up to, uh, District Attorney Sangwadulche, but I'll just remind everyone that in the litigation with, uh, uh, over the elections in twenty twenty, it was all the election boards, uh, across the county, uh, including the Election Board of Luzer County that were named as defendants.
But he could clearly name the County Council, correct?
He can do, he, anybody can, uh, name County Council, and then we, you know, a motion is, uh, filed to have County Council dismissed.
Okay.
I mean, that happens all the time, that, you know, that, that's, that's not something that's new. And to answer, no, I'm sorry, I don't know if Fito has something to say.
I, I just wanted, I mean, maybe we're given the wrong impression, I, I don't get the impression that Attorney Crocamo has any issue if council decides to get another opinion, but, um, we just, I guess, we needed to express how, how the situation happened, uh, the reason why Attorney Cosgrove, uh, was asked to issue an opinion was because the consensus of the attorneys in the Office of Law, uh, was different than that of Attorney Butera. Um, we didn't actually come to debate what the merits of the law are. Attorney Cosgrove, uh, had issued an opinion that, that, uh, basically, uh, stated what it is, but, um, if council wishes to get, uh, another opinion, um, and have that attorney investigate what the, uh, possible avenues that would be open to council, we're not here to stand in the way, it was just, uh, it was just a matter of giving everyone, uh, all the information, and, and I, I believe it's futile, um, I don't believe that County Council has standing, uh, but certainly, um, if council feels strongly about it and the majority wants to hire, uh, an outside attorney, uh, to tell you that, then, uh, I, I absolutely respect that.
And, and Mr. McGinley, just to clarify that, when, when that resolution was, Kendra called and asked me if I would help her draft that, I certainly gave her some help to draft that, just to be clear for all members of council to understand that we, we worked on that issue together. Uh, I didn't want her to, or anybody on council to think that, you know, this was just a, a Kendra Radell issue, for sure, she asked me to help her with it, and I certainly did that. My concern, my concern was, clearly, I think that Mr. Butera's opinion should be more valid than the others, I certainly agree with Ken, with Leanne, that if the Board of Elections can make that type of decision, then, you know, then they make the decision, but I think they need to have all the answers that they need to know as to why the other attorney was consulted. Now, if all the off, all the attorneys in the Office of Law was consulted about Mr. Butera's opinion, I would love to hear everybody's opinion to say that they disagreed with his opinion, other than just a blanket statement was that we checked with everybody in the office. Did, did, did the lady, uh, I'm trying to think of the attorney's name, excuse me, I can't think of her name that's in the office, did she disagree with his opinion as well? She's sitting in the office with him.
I think you talked...
Listen, I, this isn't, we're not going to tally up everyone, uh, the entire conversation that took place, that's the reason it went out to the third lawyer, uh, that's the reason why, after the, um, Office of Law reviewed it, uh, determined that the opinion, consensus opinion was different, that's the why, that's the reason, uh, former Judge Cosgrove was contacted. But if you disagree, again, like, we're not here to debate the merits of it, and, and not here to stand in the way and throw up charter barriers to council wanting to get another opinion. This was the thing that we talked about a while ago, when, Mr. Griffith, when you wanted to have, uh, uh, different attorneys. Um, if a majority of council really feels strongly about getting an opinion, we certainly would not stand in the way of that, and I don't think Attorney Crocamo, uh, is trying to give that impression, I certainly am not. So, uh, instead of debating the merits of this, you know, as far as what the underlying law is, if a majority of council wants to hire an outside lawyer to give an opinion, then, uh, certainly, I believe that the Charter would allow that, and, and I know, uh, Attorney Crocamo would not stand in the way.
Okay. I think we've had a lot discussed, is there anybody who has not had a chance to speak?
Would that be a simple motion of counsel, then, Mr. McGinley?
Excuse me?
Would that be a simple motion of counsel to do that, to, to get a separate attorney to give an opinion on it? That wouldn't have to be a resolution.
We have a resolution.
It, it could be a simple, uh, resolution, because Ramilda will, uh, whatever attorney you choose, whatever attorney the majority chooses, uh, I'm sure, uh, Ramilda would authorize it through her budget, and, um, you know, whatever the direction is of a majority of council, uh, we had discussed this, we, we don't have any interest of, of, uh, standing in the way of the majority. So, absolutely, whoever council chooses, uh, just make the motion, have it be a resolution, and that's it.
So, can we get an answer, we get an answer to Mr., from Mr. Pedri, if he's interested in his position, so we know where this whole thing is going or not going?
I don't think Mr. Pedri, you know, that's a personal decision, he would, you know, he, if he wants to answer that, fine, but that's up to him.
Well, as the county, one of the problems that I have is the county manager is in charge of the entire executive branch, and if there is no interest in that, then that needs to be disclosed, if there is an interest, that needs to be disclosed, so we know why some of these things are taking, maybe that's why some of these things are taking place, maybe it's not, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, but, you know, anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak.
No, we won't get an answer, thank you.
I, I'd, I'd like to ask a question, please, this is George Butwin, uh, calling in on the phone line.
No, Mr. Butwin, I'm sorry, uh, there's no public comment at this point, I'm sorry about that. I just have a couple of comments, you'll have a chance.
Mike?
Mr. Butwin, I'm sorry, there's no public at this point.
Can you tell me when we will be discussing the Second Amendment, uh, county, uh, resolution that Mr. Haas is...
Mr. Butwin? I, I think I told you, at the end of the voting session, there's a chance for public comment, we're at the last item on the voting session, and at the end of the work session, there's a chance also for public comment, so you can choose either one. But this is the last item on the voting session.
Please proceed, thank you.
I have a couple of comments, and then we're going to go to the vote, I think we've had a lot of discussion, I think we've heard all of the issues, and all of discussion on each one, uh, and then we'll make a decision and, and vote accordingly. First of all, you know, as someone indicated, we do appoint the election board four members of the election board, the fifth member is appointed by the election board, as we all well know. I believe that's an independent body, and I believe the council should stay away from the, uh, process unless there's something that we have to get involved in, and in this case, I believe that clearly, this is a decision that the election board has to make. Someone wants to dispute that, I think they have every right to do that, and there are ways of to do, to do that if they chose to do that. But I think we should, uh, definitely allow the election board to do their duty and responsibility, and then allow that to be, if someone wants to question it, they certainly could do that in the manner that's provided for. So, with, that being said, we have a resolution, and it was submitted by Ms. Radell, I read the, um, the title to that earlier on, if you vote yes, you vote to support the resolution, which would appoint a committee, uh, to make a decision on a special counsel. Okay? We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Irvin? Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six, yes, five, no.
The resolution passes, and now we're at public comment, Mr. Butwin? Mr. Butwin? Do you want to speak? Mr. Butwin?
The phone number is muted.
Okay.
May I speak, please?
How do you, uh, Jared?
Uh, star six to unmute, um, if they muted themselves, sir.
Star six to unmute. Mr. Butwin?
Thank you, are, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, go ahead, Mr. Butwin.
I, I am, I was just hoping to speak in regards to the, uh, amendment that's being proposed of, by Mr. Haas, uh, to have the, um, Luzer County declared as the Second Amendment Sanctuary. Um, I wanted to speak about, I, I, I do not feel that that is a reasonable, um, thing to proceed with, as I, as I read it in the newspaper, it would have no legal standing, or, 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 it, it feels as though it's simply something that's a display, and not something that's going to have, um, much in the way of legal standing, and frankly, I'm displeased that this motion was put forward and, uh, is being reviewed by the board, I, I just wanted to speak, and, uh, to be honest, I, I'm, I just, I can't believe that I've been waiting for two hours, um, to have a chance to, to make my point on this matter.
Sorry about that, Mr. Butwin, but that's sometimes the time it takes for us to get through some meetings, so, I apologize for the wait, but it's not unusual.
May I ask for a public comment, please?
Sure, what's, who are you, please?
Hi, my name is Melissa Janowski, and I live in Dallas Township.
Yes, go ahead.
And I'd like to address the same matter, thank you for your time and, and for your service. Um, the proposal isn't just unnecessary, we're not going to do better than the founders, they, they pretty much got it right the first time, but it could lead to confusion, and possibly, uh, have maybe a chilling effect on law enforcement, um, and it's worth noting in this context that no rights are absolute, and the price of the Second Amendment is, is very high. There are very few cases of successful self-defense with guns compared to crime, accidents, uh, death by suicide, about ninety-five people a day in the United States on average die by guns, one way or another, and it's worth noting here that in Luzer County, uh, about two weeks ago, out here in the Back Mountain where I live, someone fired shots into a convenience store, there was a homicide in South Washington Street in Wookspear about two weeks ago, and, uh, in a really tragic and striking example of, of what the amount of guns in this country can lead to, in February in Plains Township, in what appears to be a dispute over shoveling snow, a man, uh, killed two neighbors, and, uh, then used a, another gun, uh, for, uh, death by, by suicide. So, I think it's really important to remember that we don't need to improve upon what the founders do, and if we are going to reflect on the Second Amendment, to really do it with a lot of awareness of the cost. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Haas.
Okay, uh, Ms. Janowski, you had sent us an email, I had planned to read that, but now, in light of your, uh, verbal comments tonight, I will not be reading that email. Other members of the public?
Um, hi, um, I'm, I'm sorry, may, may I speak?
Yes, what's your, who is it?
Um, hi, my name's Eric Timlin, um, I, I just...
Eric, what's your last name again?
Timlin, um, you need me to spell it?
No, I see it on the screen now, thank you, Eric.
Oh, oh, right, um, I forget where, okay, sorry. Um, I also just wanted to talk, um, just, just the, real quick on the Second Amendment Sanctuary thing, um, I, I understand that this is a symbolic gesture, and, um, I just worry that in this country, sometimes we choose guns over human lives, and I, I really feel that this is one of the defining crises of our era right now, and I, I just hope that, um, the council will, will consider human lives and the human cost when you make this vote, um, and thank you very much.
Mr. Timlin, where do you live?
I live in Shavertown.
Shavertown, thank you. That's just for the record. Other members in the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Guevo, Speaker.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with regards to what was just discussed about the District Attorney, uh, a little history of the law prior to the amendment, uh, by the state, actually, I would agree with Solicitor Crocamo about the state, uh, changed the language, because in the law, prior to the change, there was thirty days prior to the declaration of the vacancy for the special election. The Assembly was the one who added ninety days, changed it to ninety days. So, if anyone has a problem with the fact that there was a special election declared, that's because the, the General Assembly were the ones who added the language from thirty to ninety days. It helps with, when you attend the state meetings like I do, just for the record. Also, uh, with regards to, um, you know, with the matter at hand, I don't believe that the, uh, I, I think that the council should not be the one, uh, imposed on, as far as, like, Councilmember Houck said, you know, the legal standing issue and Solicitor DeLuca, you know, uh, I don't think that the council should be party to this, I think it was basically an election board decision, and Mr. McGinley, Mr. Chairman, you said this yourself, that it's the election board that's independent, you know, that chooses when to render a special election, or for the, uh, for any election, for that matter. So, I think that is the case here. Okay? Now, with regards to the Second Amendment Sanctuary, as someone who deals with crime a lot, living in the city of Hazelton, I could tell you this, it's not the matter of people's, you know, the value of people's lives in question, because every life is of value. you know, the value of people's lives in question, because every life is of value. The question is, who chooses to take matters into their own hands when it comes to who utilizes the gun, and how they use it? Are they gonna use it for offensive or defensive purposes? Now, we could go back and forth, and I'm sure you guys will go back and forth on the merits of how, you know, if the county, if this is feasible or not, I believe it is, because we're, it's just complementing what is already encapsulated in the Pennsylvania and US constitutions. Also, in terms of, you know, not obstructing any current laws, the Uniform Firearms Act of the state governs how firearms are to be, you know, licenses are to be disseminated by the sheriffs. So that also, this resolution would not impose or impede on that. So, I'm finishing up, Mr. Chairman. So that being said, I think it's very, not in keeping, you know, in terms of anybody saying that this resolution has no standing, it just complements what's already in state and federal laws and the state constitution.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I have to ask the question to all the county councils. If I put a gun on your desk, and lay it there, load it, is that gun gonna kill people? And your answer is gonna be no. That gun is not gonna kill anybody. It's the people who pick that gun up and use it in the wrong way is gonna kill people. I heard the people from the Back Mountain, and I'm from the Back Mountain, say different things, and yes, it's the people that kill people, it's not the guns that kill people. So I mean, you know, you have to take that in perspective, and as far as that lengthy discussion about the district attorney, my goodness, I really, I'm baffled and confused with the whole situation, because someone said, yep, we're making the law, and that's what it's gonna be, and then all of a sudden, they change the law, then they have to change all the, it's like changing the history books. You know, you have to change all the history books to compensate for things that are changed. So, you know, it's just an uncertainty for the election board, and yes, I would like to have that question answered also. Is Mr. Pedri going to throw his hat in the ring for district attorney? That would be an answer that I would like to have tonight. Thank you very much, and I'll listen for my answer.
Other members of the public? I also have two other emails here. The first email is from Mike and Cindy Brannan. Please, for safety of the citizens driving Luzerne County, take an afternoon and drive the roads. I spoke with Mr. Mitchell this morning, and made him aware of just two roads in Mountain Top that require more than patching, South Main and Church. I was told resurfacing was never going to happen, but patching wood, I cannot tell you how unacceptable those words were. We are on replacement of our eighth tire in our family of four drivers and four cars. We have replaced two rims. Someone is gonna get hurt while swerving into traffic to avoid these craters. I wouldn't want the responsibility of the road conditions on my conscience. I also have an email from Claudia Glennon, in Salem Township. Luzerne County Council's consideration of the second amendment sanctuary ordinances. Second and sanctuary ordinances of, or S.A.S.O., are being supported and pushed by an organization, Gun Owners of America, as pure and simple mongering. G.O.A. are inciting a particular element of gun owners by using their coming-for-your-guns to enrage and instill anger. Local government has no place in diverting from the rule of law established in the state and federal courts, and choosing to do so, it could expose taxpayers to unnecessary financial liabilities if the ordinance is challenged in court, and oppose any S.A.S.O. or resolutions. Claudia Glennon. That being said, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, most in despair. It's now 8:15. I would like to start the work session at 8:25. As you can see, we have a robust work agenda, so I appreciate everybody's attention at 8:15, and we'll try to work through it as quickly as possible, but also allow time for people to get the information they need. In addition, I would like to tell you that Sam Sangwadolche, the district attorney, has agreed to come on. He will also be part of the work session agenda to answer questions that have come up recently about the reorganization of the office and some other items. 8:25, please.